I'd like to call the City of Reed Ridge Planning Commission for November 16, 2017 order. Can I get roll call members, please?
Jerk Bowden.
Here.
Emery Dorsey.
Here.
Donna Kimzy.
Here.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Alan Bucknam and Vivian Vos are absent tonight.
The next order in the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I get second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call for a vote? Is the...
Motion passed six to zero.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the minutes for August 3, 2017?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for August 3, 2017.
Discussion? Call for a vote?
Motion passed six to zero.
We will now open up the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda. I see no one in the audience, so I will close the public forum. Is there any old business? Or, sorry, the, there's no, there's no public, there's no public hearing. Is there any old business?
I don't believe there is.
I'm not sure what this is in reference to, but...
Sometimes if we have to like follow up on any items, but I don't have anything to follow up on. We can stall for just a minute. Zach had to grab something. There we go. Now we can go on to new business.
You have not introduced it yet?
Uh, no.
Whenever, whenever staff is ready, we can move on to new business.
Okay. So, good evening. Tonight we'll be bringing forth an update on the sign code amendment process that we've been going through for the last couple of months. I will turn it over to the City Attorney Jerry Doll to talk about kind of what brought us here, and then I'll kind of go into the format because it's a little bit different than our typical presentation format.
Members of the commission, we were expecting, the city was expecting to do an update of the sign code in any event. Codes need to get updated and changed and modernized from time to time, and so that was gonna be on the radar screen, but what sort of elevated it was a decision by the US Supreme Court in June of 2015, and that's been described in the staff memo, and I won't bore you too much with it other than to tell you that, you know, for decades, cities and counties have been regulating signs by looking at what they say. That's a real estate sign. That's a political sign. That's a construction sign. That's a, you know, and, and if it's a construction sign, then here's the rules. That's a real estate sign, and so here's the rules. How large it can be, how long it can be there. It's political signs, campaign signs, so it can only be this size. We used to have those restrictions in the, in the code. They're out now, but, but the point is that you have to read the sign to know how to regulate it. And cities and counties across the country have used that system for decades. Well, the pastor of an itinerant church in Gilbert, Arizona, which is a suburb of Phoenix, they had their meetings, they didn't have a permanent location, so they had to put out signs saying, "For the meeting, you know, for this church service this weekend," and they did that. But the town of Gilbert had a regulation saying, okay, temporary identification signs for the following things can be, you know, here are the rules for them, and they can't be in the right of way or whatever it was. So they got cited, and they claimed that, well, what you're doing is regulating the content of the sign. You're regulating our speech because it's based upon what we're saying, not the size, shape, you know, color of the sign, whether it flashes or blinks or doesn't or whatever. And went up to Supreme Court, and in a rare nine to zero decision authored by Justice Thomas, the court said, "That's right. You can't regulate signs on the basis of content," which surprised a lot of people, myself included. Since that time, cities and counties have been diligently scrubbing the content-related regulations out of their sign codes. At first I thought, oh, no, this is gonna be really hard because we really rely on saying, "It's a real estate sign. How can we do without that?" In the end, it frankly has not been that difficult because when you switch to sign types, wall sign, monument sign, pole sign, banner sign, wave banner, projecting sign, roof sign, and use zone districts to say, okay, in a business zone district, here's the kind of wall, here's the amount of signage you can have, and you can spend that on, you know, wall signs and projecting signs, and here's the rules for how large and small those can be. You'll notice I haven't mentioned a thing about what it says. You don't have to care, do you, really, what a sign says? And there are a few exceptions. Supreme Court gave us some exceptions for street identification signs, directional signs, you know, one way, this way, and there's, there's a little bit of room there. But as I've now reworked the sign codes for a number of cities that are present, and have found that it's not that difficult to say, these are the sign types, and in a given zone district, here are the sign types you can have, and the amount of signage per frontage or whatever. And here's the regulations around lighting and whatnot, whether it can be animated or sound, but none of that has to do with their content. You don't have to read the sign to know that it's a wall sign in a business district and know what the rules are. Now, there's some obvious things that are content-related, like political signs. We took those out of the city code a couple of years ago. And I say a couple, and you have to double that if you think it was a couple, so now it's probably ten. But we took those out because they're clearly political speech, and you're saying how long people can do political speech. There is room in this revised code, and I'll turn over to Zach and then take you through it for, for political signs. And, you know, it's just, there's signs in residential districts that can be this large, and it gets the city out of the business of saying what's on a sign, and it shouldn't be in that business anyhow. Why should it be? So we have found that it's actually pretty easy to do, and people are shifting to that without a lot of trouble. It does mean a fair amount of restructuring, and I think it's helpful sometimes to have graphics, but we have this draft and would appreciate kind of your thoughts about it. We have taken this concept to the city council and gotten some direction from them on half a dozen kind of big-picture questions on electronic message signs and how long, you know, can the message be in one, you know, be displayed before it changes, things like that. Again, it doesn't have to do with content. So I know Zach wants to take you through a couple of key issues that the planning staff has identified that we'd like to kind of focus your attention on, but obviously, as we go through any questions you have, we're happy to take them. Zach, you're on.
All right. So with that background, I'll just quickly take a step back. So I'm sitting tonight instead of at the podium because I have a lot of papers and because I want to take notes, and it's hard to take notes up there. Also because we want this to kind of be a dialogue. We've brought this to city council twice, a study session item, so we usually sit at a round table in the middle and kind of talk through these issues with them. So we'll go through kind of each of the items that have come up due to the Reed versus Gilbert case, items that staff has identified in going through the code over the last several months, and then also some issues that city council has presented to staff as wanting to be updated, you know, kind of while the sign code is open and being updated. There's some things they would like addressed. So we'll kind of go through each one of those topic by topic and solicit your input, thoughts and ideas on each one individually, instead of just presenting everything all at once and then asking for feedback. So that's how we'll be doing that. And then, piggybacking off of what Jerry said, the Reed versus Gilbert updates are pretty straightforward. We have removed all of our content-based sign categories and any content-based language that was in the code, and kind of reworked those sentences so they make sense now without referring to content. We did have to create, there was a void created by taking out a lot of those sign categories, so we had to create several new sign categories. So for example, we had to take out political signs, real estate signs, construction signs. So then there was a void for where all of those fell now into our regulations. So we created a yard sign category that kind of fits all of those. Obviously not perfectly because we can't care about content, but, you know, there's those new sign categories that fill that void now within the draft code that's in front of you. We also, what did we do? We changed our long tables. I don't know if you've looked at the old sign code, but there's just pages and pages of tables that are very repetitive, and we've changed that into a text format. So each sign type has its own subsection of the code. And we also rejoined scattered sections of the code. So for example, our freestanding sign regulations were in like four different subsections within the sign code. So it made it difficult when you were sitting down with someone who wanted their freestanding sign. You know, you're like, well, you have this, and then flip back five pages and this, and flip forward 10 pages and this. So we've taken all those pieces and put them all together. So that's, those are most of the small tweaks that we've made, and then the content-based tweaks that we made in response to Reed versus Gilbert. So council was supportive of those proposed updates, so I guess, well, that'll be our first kind of prompt to you is the Reed versus Gilbert content-based updates. We've received a thumbs up from council. If you guys have any questions or comments on that specifically, or just kind of another thumbs up.
Commissions have questions on that? I have one as it relates to the, we have the, I don't know what section is, but the marijuana has a sign reference, and it's contrary to the Reed versus Gilbert.
Yeah, so Section 11-417 states, "It just refers to retail marijuana establishments and signage that can't have any signage that's deceptive, false, or misleading. Shall not display a sign that depicts a leaf of marijuana plant or an image resembling the same." So my recollection of the marijuana sign category is that we could leave that alone, and correct me if I'm wrong.
And would that remain, here's a question too, is would that remain where it is? Or is there thought to move that into where the sign code is? So like, all signs are here?
I will tell you my reaction to a couple levels of, first on whether you can regulate content in a, in that arena. The kind of help we have, both from Supreme Court and just generally, is that, that, the, you can prohibit the, or regulate the advertising of something that's illegal. And of course, marijuana is legal under state law, but it's not legal under federal law still. And obviously, that issue didn't come up in the Reed versus Gilbert case, and a lot of municipalities still do call out marijuana establishment signage for a specific regulation. I would be inclined to leave that where it is in Chapter 11. It's kind of its own animal, and to the extent that industry wants to challenge those content restrictions on the basis of Reed, there, I think, I'm not, I'm glad you asked because it's the right question. I think the last thing they want to do is, is, you know, call attention. And from a regulatory standpoint, they've been fairly successful in Colorado, kind of flying under the radar, the ones that are, you know, fairly reputable operations. And my first defense would be, we need to be able to regulate you in this way because you're in illegal use under federal law. And that's why we have to have some regulations that relate to your use in particular. It's something I'm glad you asked. I haven't really thought it through. I'm gonna follow up with others. If there's something more or less we need to do with marijuana signs, we'll bring it back to you.
Sounds good.
But with respect to Reed generally, thumbs up for the Supreme Court. Kind of hard to do thumbs down to the US Supreme Court. Probably shouldn't, you know, if we can avoid it.
I just was curious because I didn't happen to see it in here, but I also didn't necessarily go through line by line. And I was just kind of curious with personal signage because, you know, sometimes I drive around and the people are, you know, spinning and doing all that stuff. Is that, does that fall under, but I also see people on the corner asking for money, things like that. Does that fall under municipal code signage?
It does. We have signs carried by persons, I think is how it's defined, and that's a category that we regulate. And again, when you think about it, a sign carried by a person, you don't have to care what it says. It's a sign being carried by a person. I think you ask, as usual, this commission always asks the questions that are right at the corners, you know, of the, which is, is a compliment because those are the harder questions. When it sort of morphs into me holding a sign, and this came up a little bit of the council discussion, saying, you know, "Anything helps," you know, a retired vet, "God bless" kind of thing. That's a sign carried by a person, and we do have regulations for commercial signs carried by persons, which is really, to be honest, the focus of our sign code. I will tell you that the council sort of tortured us a little bit about this. I forget which council member asked that, well, if this, and then if a Ming vase fell, and then, and you know, at some point you go, well, our, and the police department was there, I think the chief was there, and he said, you know, "From an enforcement standpoint, that's not, if the signs carried by persons rule is that you, you know, only in the business district or whatever, and someone's not in the business district and saying, 'Anything helps,'" that, he said, "It's not going to be an enforcement priority for us." As usual, anytime you have, you get into an arena to regulate, there, you scoop in some things that you just can't avoid scooping in that people will torture you about and say, "Well, what about this?" In real life, in practice, that just is not gonna, we're not gonna write tickets for that. We might write tickets for trespassing or some other activity that person's undertaking, but not related to their sign. But yeah, it's interesting. You asked the same kind of probing question on the edge of the issue that the council asked around that.
Just curious.
Yeah, and I was glad to have the police chief there because we got all wrapped up in the, well, when do you morph from a "anything helps" sign to, "What about an ID badge? That's a sign carried by police." You know, but it is, and the chief was there to say, "Look, rule of reason here. Commercial sign spinners, well within the scope. We can say where they can be and when they can be. And I'm not worried about charging a homeless person for a sign code violation."
Yeah, yeah.
You're just not gonna go there. And I'm glad he said that, and that kind of, the council went, "Oh, yeah, right. We're two in the weeds," and they went on.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yeah.
I do have, I do have an experience I'd like to share though, because being the homeless is not a crime. Carrying the temporary sign is not a crime, but what I did experience while driving along Wazworth, this is a while back, was there was obviously a homeless person in the middle of the median at 38th and Wazworth, which as we all know is about maybe two feet wide. And, and as I was driving, coming from the north of Nevada, driving southbound, he dropped a sign in the road, went to grab it, fell down face in the left turn lane, and a car came within six inches of him. And I got really nervous for the kid, so, you know, I don't know, I ended up calling the Weaver's police. I'm like, hey, this is, this is not safe. You know, those little, the curbs are, you know, like a little three, four inch curb. He really shouldn't be out in the middle of the median with the sign. I don't know what became of that, but I don't know if there's anything in the code that presents, prevents people from temporary signs standing in the middle of these medians as a safety issue.
We talk about sort of the signs carried by persons in a minute. I will tell you, cities across the country are struggling with that very issue. The ACLU has been pushing back really hard on that very issue. And what, because of the huge safety concern, but pedestrians at times are allowed there. It's just that you shouldn't stay there.
Right.
Camping out there for various purposes is really what's dangerous. You're crossing the road, you're stopping there, and then you're going on. And cities have come up with some programs that are around a trespassing kind of offense. Now, we're well off the sign code topic here, but, but it's a real struggle. And it's gotten worse in the last year or so with, with some court decisions, with the ACLU really pressing. And in a way, and I think in a way that endangers the very people they're trying to protect their civil rights of, but you become, then your personal life is endangered. So as to exercise these rights, it's a real dilemma. For our signs carried by persons, Zach can probably give you a good sense of how we deal with the kind of the locational restrictions that we place on them.
Yeah, so actually in my presentation, we have temporary signs really quick first, and then we'll get into sign spinners and what council directed us on, if that's all right.
Hold that thought, and we'll get there.
So temporary signage, back when we talked to council in May, they noted that they wanted us to address temporary signs. Our current regulations make enforcement pretty difficult, actually. So what staff has proposed is to allow one temporary sign at even given time for any property or business. So in this example above, you know, this mobile carrier, instead of having, you know, all seven signs up, they would be allowed to have just one. In this next example, which is actually just down 38, it's in Denver, but still relevant. It's a mixed-use building. The apartments are allowed to have their sign. The restaurant that has that little A-frame sign to the left would be allowed to have their sign, even though they're both on the same property. They're two individual businesses. However, what is wrong is that the apartments have two signs. So under what staff's proposal, the apartments would only be allowed to have either their little flutter flag or that yard sign. So this is just kind of an example of how we would approach this situation in Wheat Ridge for say a mixed-use development that has multiple businesses on one property. So council was supportive of this approach, and they also wanted us to address maintenance of temporary signs kind of in this approach. So our question to you is, are you supportive of this one-per-business temporary sign allowance? Seeing heads shaking yes.
My only concern, not the quantity, was that, is that I've seen some temporary signs blocking site triangle, you know?
Uh-huh, yeah.
That, you know, if it's that flag or something, I've seen cigarette signs mounted on pole signs that are, I think, temporary in nature, but they're up for months and they, you can't see as you're coming through with a car. They're in the site triangle.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if there's anything that addresses that, a temporary, putting temporary, temporary sign or shall not.
Well, they should already fall under kind of the clear zone of the site triangle. So if they are in fact, you know, within that clear zone, then that's pretty easy for us to enforce. You know, it's within the four feet, you know, clear zone that has around corners. So, yeah, yeah.
I think, I think we do have a generic site triangle provision for all signs we would care about. But I just added that to our notes, and I think probably in this case, it's an education component with our code enforcement team. That's a really good point. I'm not sure we mentioned it. We have a handout about temporary signs, and we'll update all of those once this is completed. But we'll need to make sure that that's on there too. It's a good comment.
Okay. So I saw a bunch of heads nodding yes.
Yeah, and fellow commissioners, I may not go around like I usually do, so if you have something to say, raise your hand or speak up. Go ahead.
What is considered temporary? Maybe it's in here and I missed it?
Yeah, it's in our definitions. I think we did tweak that definition as well, didn't we? Yeah.
We actually did tweak that definition. So Zach mentioned it's been hard to enforce against temporary signs, and it's a couple of different reasons. The rules are different for different properties, and when you're in the field, you don't know what the zoning would be necessarily. And then we've had a provision about time limits, and it's sort of 30 days, or 60 days, or 90 days if you want to lump together. So you'd have to be a code enforcement officer going by a property every day in a row for three months, which just doesn't make sense, right? We know that there's sort of egregious violations out there. So this would greatly simplify that, but the other issue they were having is our definition wasn't strong enough. If they did end up citing somebody into court, sort of what we viewed as a temporary sign wasn't exactly the same as what the judge thought was a good definition for a temporary sign. So it's a great question because we've been tweaking this. So if it's not intuitive once you hear it from Zach, we'd like to hear that too.
So, yeah, we've relied heavily on kind of the makeup or material of the sign, which in my research, other communities have done as well. But how we've defined it here, "Any sign, banner, pennant, balloon, inflatable, portable sign, yard sign, or other outdoor advertising sign constructed of light fabric, cardboard, wallboard, plywood, sheet metal, paper, or other light materials with or without a frame, intended or designed to be displayed for a limited period of time." So that's the current definition where we've gotten pretty detailed about kind of specific types and materials to kind of cover the space.
There's one you missed though. There was a, at one time, there was a motorized female mannequin on 44th and Wazworth.
Oh, right, tax season, yeah, of course. So we've relied heavily on kind of the material and the sign type. So for reference, all of the sign types that I began the definition with are all of the temporary sign types that are allowed later on in the code. So we address each one, you know, in the definition itself. All right. Move forward. All right. So now we get into sign spinners, or as council prefers that we call them, persons holding signs, which I've noted to change. So we did not come to council with a recommendation on this. We, I did research on a whole bunch of different municipalities and, you know, news articles that have come out about, say, you're trying to do this and that about them, and we just didn't really have any clear consensus on what staff should recommend. So we just kind of dumped it in front of council and said, "Tell us what you think." So they talked around it, and ultimately, you know, Jerry said we got into the weeds a little bit, but ultimately reached consensus to allow sign spinners along the right of way, given that they don't negatively impact vehicular, bicycle, or pedestrian safety. And they are at no times allowed, actually, within the actual roadway where the cars are. So that is where council ended up, and I'm curious, yeah.
Only because I saw one, I think it was this summer, on the triangle, not in the road, but you know, where the Burger King is. What?
We call it the pork chop that like separates the right turning.
Yes, the pork chop. He was in the triangle of the bone of the pork chop. And would that be allowed? Because it seemed, I mean, of course, it was interesting because he was truly spinning and throwing it up in the air and all of these different things, but, but it also seemed really distracting on a major intersection.
Yeah, so by this definition, it would be allowed, although if we're talking site triangle, I don't, I don't really know how that would play into the site triangle regulations because presumably at some point, he's within that clear zone.
Well, it seemed to me sort of like what was just brought up about being in the median, like, clearly he was safe, but those signs are this big, and so people are crossing in the crosswalk, and so he was on sort of the thin edge of the the little triangle.
Well, I, and I've used that crosswalk many, many times, and it's, it's tight.
Yeah.
And if somebody, if somebody's spinning a sign, not only do you have to worry about the traffic, you know, taking turns off of 38, turning north onto Wazworth, and now you gotta worry about the sign spinner.
There's a lot of people walking through that.
And the other concern to add on to that is once Wazworth becomes widened, one of the key things, I don't know what the city's doing specifically, but is that but is that you want to create protective medians, because it, you're gonna have six lanes instead of four. And so if there's nothing that prohibits uh, sign spinners in the in the medians.
I guess I'd like to see signs not in the medians, I think, just generally for the safety issue. Well, I think that's that's what I'm curious. Is the roadway the roadway, or is the roadway the whole site triangle and the fixtures and?
How this is worded is that they're allowed within the right-of-way, which includes the pavement where the road is, and includes the sidewalk usually behind. And then, you know, in some places like along Thirty-eighth Avenue, kind of that amenity zone is usually within the right-of-way as well. So the median that you're talking about, or the pork chop, is definitely within the right-of-way. Um, and based on kind of the direction that we've gotten from council, it doesn't sound like they would be negatively impacting vehicular traffic, maybe some pedestrian traffic, though. So that specific example, I I don't know, it's kind of a gray area. If there's no one crossing there, then I think that they would be allowed.
I think would we may, I mean, I don't know if this is too in the weeds to define roadway, but I would define it as a sort of like the cur, the outermost curbs or flow lines or the edge of asphalt, and you can't get within that area. So the pork chop would be within that area. I think, it was not the council meeting, but I think that, you know, typically the sidewalks are included in right-of-way. So if you say you can't be in the right-of-way at all, then it gets to be fairly prohibitive. So I think their intent was probably you can't be like off the sidewalk into the roadway, which would, I think we should we should just interpret to include those types of medians, particularly given your.
Well, you can't say curb or curb, you have to say our most, because the pork chop is gonna have curb as well. But but the other issue is it's public versus private. If you're the sign spinner, you can't be on private property, but the sidewalks are public. And so they want to be where it's public, where they can't be kicked off, but in general, society doesn't want a sign just, you know, hitting a pedestrian or blocking a car, you know?
So it it sounds like maybe we should modify the definition so it's very clear that they are not within, not allowed within the outermost curbs. Of the of the roadway. So then they would be allowed on the sidewalk behind the curb. Or the amenity zone behind the curb, sorry.
I think it comes back to the conversation we had about the the guy in the median, that it's meant for a temporary transportation. And so someone shouldn't be out there camping, doing something, they should be traveling.
Right.
Or not, right? I mean.
I think we can capture that intent, although it's interesting that you talk about temporary versus traveling, because I've been at Wadsworth and Colfax, and the sign spinner crosses just sort of continuously through the crosswalk with his sign, so he's getting all directions of traffic. Which I don't think we could prohibit, because they'd be traveling. But I do think it's worth mentioning that sort of relatively stationary persons spinning signs are prohibited within, and then sort of wordsmith your intent of, don't get in where cars are moving, kind of a thing.
Right.
Okay, that's it's good comments.
And then the other question is, um, what about the marijuana sign spinners?
I don't think I'd treat them any differently than other sign spinners.
Is that in the marijuana code that you can't have sign spinning?
I I'm not sure, I I'm not prepared to think that through. I can look, I um, to the extent they're allowed to spin signs, I wouldn't treat them any differently than other sign spinners. I just, because then you're really reading content to decide whether, you know, I'm I'm more comfortable with dealing with the the um, the facility itself and the signage on the facility. Because that's really where the illegal activity is taking place under federal law. Is it illegal under federal law to carry a sign that advertises marijuana? Probably not elsewhere. So I wouldn't want to distinguish between them and someone, you know, advertising real estate services out on Wadsworth and Colfax.
Unless they had the the criteria, the cross or a leave on that.
Well, I don't think even then, because again, what you're doing is saying, okay, let me read your sign to decide if you're somebody that can be here in the, in a place that normally is allowed for every other member of the public. I just, you you know, I mean, what what I think you're suggesting is is, now let me back up. Like, that pushes the envelope in the wrong way. I mean, it's the wrong direction to go, respectfully, because th- th- then you're kind of embracing the concept of telling pedestrians on a public right-of-way or in places where people can be under certain circumstances, whether they can be there at all, based upon what message they're carrying. And this is not at all related to, or it's not at their place of business, which you, in my opinion, you've got a stronger case to say it's an illegal activity, that business, and we can regulate it more heavily.
Well, I've, I mean, I've personally seen, I won't say which one it was, and I even took a picture of it, but I've seen there was marijuana business at a certain corner, and they had a sign, and so they're on their building, everything was exactly as the per the city of Wheat Ridge, and it met all these record requirements, but then they had the side spinner, and it had everything you're not supposed to do, that was on the sign spinning. And so then you just circumvented the code, and it's like.
Sure, but let me give you an example. I I walk out there, and I I have a sign that says, I promote tax evasion. Here's how you do it. Here's how to violate the the US tax code. Uh, fraudulently, uh, claim the following exemptions. I'm clearly advertising an illegal activity, I'm out there on the sidewalk, and I do not think that I'll get the police department to ticket that person. I don't think that there's a difference. It's not, because you, because there there really isn't. Then you you're really getting into the weeds of of deciding based on content, y- y- you know, whether I can carry something on the public public right-of-way. I get it that it's might be offensive, they're they're avoiding the otherwise more strict regulations around marijuana. But I I I have to draw that line there, I I really do. I'm, I I would not support a s- a different sign spinner restriction or a prohibition on sign spinners that are spinning signs that are advertising marijuana, as opposed to any other illegal activity. I would not go there. And I would lose that case. That's my answer.
So it sounds like the temporary or the sign spinners could have whatever is against the code, and that would be okay?
Yeah, because because again, that's, it's, that's pure speech up to the point where you're crying fire in a crowded theater kind of thing, where you're, the the yours, your your actions by your speech are 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 an immediate danger to others. If, you know, um, I can have signs asking to impeach people. That's legal political speech. I can, I can, I can do all sorts of things that are offensive to somebody, but that's the whole point of the First Amendment, you know? Unless you're endangering someone physically by the, your exercise of those First Amendment rights, you get to exercise them in the, in in public forums, this is a public forum. And while we can have all the restrictions we want on tax evasion and other other things at locations, uh, you don't have those, I you just, you, that would be going in the in the wrong direction.
So if a.
I'm hanging in the pocket on this one, I'm not gonna get
Yeah.
pushed off of my spot. We can keep going if you like.
No, I'm just curious, because it's, because I would think if hypothetically, if a if a retailer followed the code and said, okay, I can't do this, and then they have a temporary sign, and and they do something, and they find out that, yeah, I can do all this, then why wouldn't they challenge the city and say, if you're allowing me to do it on a temporary, we should strike it down on the on the permanent signage? It, this doesn't make sense, go before the judge, and judge would, I don't know what the judge would say. If if you can do, if you can do the the symbols on the temporary, but you can't do them on the permanent, that, it should be the same one way or another, but.
I'm much more comfortable than you with the line that's being drawn. You have to draw a line somehow.
Yeah.
And the much better line to draw is that activities in public forums on public property have a different set of rules than activities on private property that are also illegal that you can hammer down on. And that's how I feel about it.
I think that adds a little more clarity.
All right.
The the public versus private of the actual property line.
Fair enough. We should move on, though, in the interest of making sure Zach gets through his list.
Is is there a restriction on number of spinners a business can have? Is it like a temporary sign?
So, yeah, that's what Lauren and I were just discussing, is I I realized we haven't put it in the code yet, because we we didn't know how council was gonna go. We didn't know if they were gonna go with the complete prohibition or allow them. Um, so it will go in the temporary sign category. So you can have one sign spinner, or one flutter flag, or one whatever, whatever.
Oh, you get one or or or, or one and and and?
One, one sign spinner or one flutter flag or one of those.
But flutter flags are on your property, right? A spinner is not on your property.
Right.
So you could potentially have two, right? You could have flutter flag, and then spinner, who is allowed by personal speech to be on public property. So they really, you couldn't limit.
I think I think that's true. I I think that's true. Okay.
Okay. All righty. We'll move forward to electronic message centers. Um, so this is another item that council um, asked that we look into back in May. Our our current standards are misaligned with industry standards in two ways. Um, first of all, our code restricts copy changes no less than every fifteen seconds. So on this sign here, worship ten AM would have to stay up for fifteen seconds until the next slide that says, you know, community dinner, Tuesday or whatever, comes back up. Um, current industry standards have that 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 change between slides, um, between four and ten seconds. And most of our neighboring communities have them at eight. Um, so what we propose to council is also lowering that from fifteen to eight. So instead of having to wait fifteen seconds to change, this would only have to wait eight seconds. Um, it it's a minor change um, in the grand scheme of things, but it does align our code with with more of the industry standard and then as well as with our our neighbors. Um, so so council reached consensus to to reduce that time from fifteen to eight. Um, so I'll throw that at you first of all, and then we have a couple more things to talk about with these signs. Does that seem fair?
I've, yeah, I've researched other municipalities, and eight seconds is pretty standard.
Standard, yeah. Okay. All right.
It's our tension span, isn't it? It's getting shorter.
So the next way that our code was misaligned with industry standards is that our um, illumination standards are out of date and difficult to enforce. Um, so for example, if folks were complaining that this sign was too bright, we don't really have a mechanism to measure if it is in fact too bright, because we just, we don't have a definition of brightness. Um, so there's, we're we're pretty limited in that scope of enforcement. Um, so we have pulled um, some sample language from the International Sign Association, who kind of works as an intermediary between governments, you know, trying to regulate signs, and businesses who want all the signage that they can get for kind of comfortable mediums between the two. Um, so we have included in the draft code the language that they have proposed, or or that they have written, um, that we thought fit very well into our code, that it touches on um, what brightness should should be, you know, like measurement standards, and then as well as a method of actually measuring it. So there's a, there's a kind of a step-by-step guide, if you will, of of being able to measure, is this sign actually too bright or not? So we've we've put those into the code, and then that would also um, prompt the need to buy an illuminance meter to measure the signs, so we could actually enforce, again, signs that are too bright. Um, those sign, those meters cost between like two and five hundred dollars. Um, we've talked to code enforcement about this, their their new supervisor, I guess he's not that new anymore. Um, he's on board with this uh, method of approach. He read through the draft sign code language, um, and and knows that he would, you know, kind of be tasked with enforcing this, and and he's on board. Um, council was also on board with with this concept, so now we are asking you.
I think it sounds like a good idea. Um, we need something quantitative, uh, with something that backs up where we're getting this information from. I I sent you a couple references from C dot, I don't know, they had something referencing um, a hundred foot Lambert's, I don't know what a foot Lambert is and how it translates to whatever the the measurements the city was using, but uh.
Yeah, um, I forget what method is in the proposed sign code, but it's not the foot Lambert. Um, and I'm not sure, I don't remember off the top of my head if what you sent me was for um, brightness of billboards, which we are not, we're not touching our billboard regulations at all. Um, they come right after the sign code, and oftentimes, we've had inquiries, I think, from some folks in the billboard industry about what we're doing, and we're not touching billboards at all. They, I think, so billboards still um, have some sort of C dot review.
Right.
Um, but any signs, you know, on Wadsworth or Sheridan or Kipling are regulated by the city of Wheat Ridge, not C dot.
It was in reference to another municipality um, with a car dealership southeast of, south of Denver.
Okay.
Fairly recent, past couple of years.
Okay. Um, I'll relook at that, because I I don't remember off the top of my head.
Like I said, I don't I don't know, I don't know what a foot Lambert is, so.
I'm looking at that right now, it looks like, so the the method that we had looked up and that the language we're more familiar with from reviewing sort of commercial photometric plans is foot candle, and foot Lambert is essentially a different unit of measurement. So it would, I assume there's probably different technology that could measure sort of one or the other. But it's like, it looks like it's sort of like meters versus feet kind of a thing.
Okay.
But we'll definitely look at that and make sure that um, whatever technology we can find obviously aligns with whatever units we're using or something like that.
Right, yeah. Okay. So other than that, illuminance standards in the code, so we can enforce. Sounds good, okay. Um, additionally, uh, during this discussion, council landed on, um, let's see here, sorry, let me get my language right, a um, council directed for the amortization of all existing LED signs, requiring them to comply with the new illumination standards within two years. So that was something that we hadn't proposed to them, that they kind of came up with. So, you know, if the sign was too bright, it would, you know, fall into the old code, but they would have two years essentially to make sure that it it conforms with the new brightness standards in our our code.
The one thing that I might add is, um, and I don't know if it came up at council, but what we've observed just from the way we enforce against signs now, if it really is an issue, is essentially just a courtesy call of, do you mind please turning your sign down, because it feels like it's a safety hazard? And what we often ask for is a screenshot of their computer program, which is often what's running the sign. So I feel confident that an amortization clause wouldn't require that most people are replacing a thirty thousand dollar sign, but really just sort of learning their software better and tweaking it so that it can um, comply with our standards. So it's, we we don't typically, um, or have not historically done amortization clauses in the sign code, because it can feel like a big change. But in this case, I don't think it'll be overly burdensome, in my opinion.
Okay.
Two years seems like a little bit of a long time. Is that to be sensitive towards a ca- a case in which they would have to replace an expensive sign? Or where does the two years, kind of where where is that benchmark established?
To be honest, I'm not sure, that's what council came up with, and they didn't really have a a reason behind that. Um, that may have easily been their thought, is, you know, a lot of these newer signs do have the computer software, but I guess, I don't, well, I don't know, I guess.
You know, for amortization periods, the, I've had to do those a number of times, and for different purposes. And I've come to appreciate and understand that the length of the amortization period really is and should be related to the to the cost, the potential cost it might be to comply. And uh, so if you're amortizing out a whole use, y- y- you know, that's longer. The state legislature has kindly about uh, ten years ago passed a statute saying you can't amortize uses like the complete use, if it's a cannery, you know, how long, you can, you can still amortize features of a use like a sign or like illumination. But your point's a good one, which is that it's a kind of a legislative determination of value. You know, a, a sign, if it has to be replaced and it's a thirty thousand dollar sign, it would be nice for me to know. I've got two years to kind of plan for that. If it's easy, as Lauren says, dynamite, you know, but I think your point's well made. There may well be some signs that just are old enough that they're not controlled by a computer program and they're gonna have to change out parts of the sign. There's no real magic in the term, but I think that's sort of what count, was on council's mind was if there's real value here, we need to give them some time to plan for it. I've seen other cities amortize wall packs and lighting on, on sides of buildings to deal with dark sky. Where you're clearly gonna have to either shield it and spend money doing that or get a new, new feature. And, and a couple of years is, I think, I won't say generous, but I think it's, it's gonna easily pass some kind of court test. But longer, shorter, because we'll take these recommendations to council and if you feel strongly, you, you know, that it should be tweaked in one direction or another on any of this, that's one of the things we'd like to know.
I'm fine with two years. The rest of you wanna weigh in?
What's that? Two years long enough?
Alright.
Is there, so what is the, so it's a code, if, i- if something's wrong, that's a code issue. And then they would give them this two-year clock and then what is the teeth of that?
Code enforcement would be a ticket, just like any other zoning violation.
Alright, moving on. The next item that council wanted us to look at was what they called iconic signs, which we, you know, based on their description boiled down to three D signs. So like this coffee cup kind of popping out of, of the wall. So we included a three D sign category in the code and we are allowing them for blade and freestanding signs. So essentially, this would be a blade sign where it comes off of a building. And then a freestanding sign is like the, the monument, you know, freestanding sign. Oh, I forgot I did this mock-up. So, you know, like this coffee cup projecting off the wall would be a blade sign. This little chicken in the coffee cup on the ground are, are monument signs. So we would only allow them for those two sign types. And then how we would measure them would be as a function of how the regular sign type is measured. So, let me see. So for the blade signs, actually for both, it's, it would be, it would, the three D sign would be allowed one point seven five times the two D sign amount. So if you're allowed fifteen square feet for your, for your freestanding sign, you would multiply that by one point seven five and you'd be allowed twenty six point two five cubic feet if you wanted to do a three D sign. So same would apply for the, the blade sign coming off the building, just because there's three dimensions there, oops. So you need to have some larger amount of allowance in order to, to get something that is actually, you know, a sign.
And Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, but are the, these are scaled, so that coffee cup is the one point seven five of that yellow.
Exactly.
Traditional, so we played with the scale to understa- you know, this is an arbitrary number, obviously. But we were trying to understand what is the visual impact of a three D object as a ratio of what the two D sign is.
Yep, so, yeah, thanks for, I forgot about that. So the, yeah, the free D sign that says single tenant freestanding sign allowance, that is what is allowed, you know, for this storefrontage. Like I measured it out, we know what it would be allowed if it was, if this was an actual building. And then, as Lauren mentioned, the coffee cup and the, the rooster, the chicken are one point seven five times that sign allowance, just in different forms. Same with the blade sign on, on the wall. What, what you see there is, is what would be allowed for this storefront if it actually existed.
And are we gonna talk about if they move? Because it, it goes back to the, to the mannequin. And is that considered a temporary sign or would that be considered a three D sign?
The mannequin standing in the road?
The, the motorized mannequin.
Motorized three D sign. I mean, we did, I thought somewhere in here, or at least in our current code, we don't allow animation and sort of moving things in general.
Chicken can't move, right?
Like flap its wings.
Cluck around or.
Is it, we don't allow?
I don't think so, because I, and if it's not something that we translated over, as you can imagine, it was such a huge overhaul, we still need to make sure we didn't miss anything. But that's, we don't want permanent signs to move, with the exception of barber shop poles, which is why they're called out because they do inherently tend to move. So I don't know if we'll find it right now, but we'll make sure they don't.
I, I, yeah, no, I was just.
You know, I, I don't think it's in there, to be honest. I think it got wrapped up in the sign spinner. When we took that out, I think it just kind of got lumped in there.
Because I could just see somebody.
Totally.
Not that I would ever think of doing this, but, you know, lighting up the chicken with LCD lights and having it cluck around. And say Five Fridges Farm.
You're never gonna do that?
Well, that's a really good catch, honestly, because with a big overhaul like this, some things unintentionally get left out. And animation, lights and moving parts and sound are, are all things that, you know, are traditionally prohibited. You know, unless you have a real new category, so we'll look for that.
And as you know, it's hard to keep up with the sign industry. They get creative before we do. So the more we can sort of generally identify those types of sort of nuisance activities of a sign, hopefully catches things before they get more creative.
Well, I'm gonna go out and get that lit up chicken LCD sign before all this happens.
And I don't know if, if it was covered, but I've seen new technology now that is either embedded in the sidewalks, you know, like LEDs, and I've also seen projection advertising that as you walk by it, it would have like a little, like an LED projection that projects onto either the sidewalk or it could be onto the building. It's not really, I mean, it's per- may, may or may not be permanently mounted, but you don't see anything if it's not turned on. But its intent is more temporary.
Kind of like how people project like snowflakes under their house or something, but it would be.
Right, lasers. Have you, has anybody seen those, the?
I have, yeah.
I haven't seen those, but I've, I've seen them in magazines.
I mean, my first reaction is whatever it's, if it's projected onto wall-to-wall sign and everything about animation and flashing and stuff would apply, but.
But I could argue.
It's also temporary. We'll add that to the riddle.
I, I think my only concern, as long as, as long as it wasn't distracting any drivers or pedestrians, you know, more from a safety. If it's kind of intended temporary, but there's always new technologies.
Okay, we'll add that to the list. And may make sense for that to be.
And it would also, and if it's in the sidewalk, then I guess it's the, potentially it could be public. So then you, you know, doesn't, I don't know that, it sounds like you could. You know, if they're projecting from the building onto the public property, then what? I guess that becomes the same thing as the sign spinner.
Yeah, but that's not a person.
Well, I guess that's not a person, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, that's, that's really tricky. I mean, and I've seen that in a number of places. You're walking down the sidewalk and you see a logo there that you say how'd they get there and it clearly came from the business. So they're projecting onto the, to some extent, I think it's wise to wait to see how big a problem something becomes, you, you know, or how prevalent it really is. Because at some point you can imagine, as we all can, the, the next step technologically and then you try to draft a regulation around it. Sometimes it's better to be, to, to, to follow the industry rather than be ahead of them. This may be one of those, those, those places. I frankly don't know. It's certainly on our radar screens. But if you kind of embrace a regulation of it, I'm not quite ready to figure out how that would be written yet, I guess.
So maybe put a pin in that one?
Sorry?
Put a pin in that one?
Put a pin in that one, yeah. I think so. And that's, will be our task all, all night, you know, and it's our task as government to figure out, okay, where can we best use the limited resources we have? And that's especially true, and I'm glad again that chief was in the meeting with the, with the council where he finally said, you know, timeout. I'm not gonna ticket stuff like that. You can write it all you like, but that's just not an enforcement priority. It's gonna rarely happen and stop that. But we, we turn around and then we realize that something really has taken off. It was something we thought would be minor and now it's a huge amount of visual clutter, you, you know, down Thirty Second Avenue. You know, in the heart of where we want, or Thirty Eighth Avenue, sorry, where we, you know, we want to have a downtown. This may be one to kind of wait and see how it evolves a little, frankly. It, I'm not gonna forget it though, because it's, it's out there.
Thought through that specifically. So, three D signage, we all in agreement? That's okay, okay? Alright, so off-premise signage. Currently, our code prohibits off-premise signage very explicitly. However, since our sign regulations now have to be content neutral, we need to address off-premise signage because in order to know that this sign is off-premise, you have to read it to know that there's not a subway behind this sign. So we played around with this idea a lot internally as staff and something that we proposed to council that they gave us consensus to, to kind of move forward with, and I really like your input on this, is to have the owner of the sign and the owner or lesssee of the property that the sign is going on to, to be the same person. So that means that we would require proof of ownership or lease when someone submits a building permit application, which we actually do for many other building permit and land use applications already, so it's not a huge departure from, from what we already require. And then, you know, we would just match to make sure that, that whoever owns that property is also, you know, the person having the sign. Now, since we can't look at content, that doesn't mean that someone can still put a sign that says subway, you know, on their, their gas station property or whatever. But we, you know, at, at a certain extent, you're allowed a, a certain amount of signage. So we think most people will take advantage of that signage for their own business. And, you know, somewhat to what maybe, you know, Jerry just said is, is it worth the trouble of trying to find another way of, of, you know, really regulating that people are not putting other signs on their property? If they're using their sign allowance, they're using their sign allowance. I was listening to a webinar today where they said, would you care really if McDonald's had a Burger King sign instead of a McDonald's sign? You know, it's kind of the effect of, of that. I don't know how I felt about that when they said it, but that's, I just heard it. So it's, it's, while they were talking about the off-premise signage, so. That was our proposal. Council kind of gave us a thumbs up on that and I'd be interested to, to hear y'all's thoughts.
I typically, I typically see a lot of home builder signs in the public right of way, you know, especially like in tree lawns.
What kind of sign, sorry?
Uh, home builder, I won't say that, the name of the homes, but, you know, this home, you know, drive whatever, three miles, five miles. And you see those.
Yeah, should not be allowed into the current code.
Yeah, if it's, you know, if it's in the right of way, it's, you know, there are communities that have found it's cheaper to have a guy with a truck just going around collecting all that, those signs, because those signs are valuable, you know, if you're the realtor. And you can come collect it at City Hall for a charge. And after a while, they go, oh, that's no good. And they figure out, you know, that they're not gonna stick them in the right of way. So that's, that's on the enforcement side, but. I do think that this approach has real merit. You know, the city attorneys have kind of been noodling on this too. How do you deal with off-premise signs? How do you know they're off-premise without reading them and then, then you're into that box? And I think this is a real creative way around that. You know, if that person that has the property has a sign budget, why should we care? Again, why do we care what it says? That's our new mantra. We don't care what's on your sign. Put whatever, but spend your sign allocation wisely because it's the only allocation you have. And, and I think that that's kind of self-regulating, frankly.
Would that take care of the signs that I see that are sort of handwritten that say, make lots of money in real estate, flipping homes, call this number, that kind of stuff?
Well, it'd be an illegal sign because they, they wouldn't be able to demonstrate a leasehold interest in the property underneath the sign.
So that kind of sign would fall under this?
It becomes an enforcement, you know, cost headache. Because clearly illegal, clearly you can enforce, probably pointless to write them into court because it's, that whole process is gonna take more time than it would hiring the guy with the pickup truck to collect them all, which I think is a nice creative way to, of, of doing it, just seizing illegal signs. But yes, that would allow the city to, probably what I would do from enforcement standpoint would be start generating emails to those people saying, we're advising you that you can't do this in this community unless you have a leasehold interest and your sign's illegal and subject to confiscation or writing you into municipal court. It's cheaper to send a bunch of those emails and see, you know, kind of see what kind of impact that has on the industry.
Do you have a question, Drew?
I think it's, it's been addressed. I mean, my, my question was yard sale and open house kind of signs on commercial property. So I think that probably falls in line with what you're talking about.
I, I feel like it might get a little hard to determine. Let's say you have a four acre site approximately. Could be bigger, that has multi-tenants, you know, it's got a coffee shop, it's got a several fast food places, you know, so do each one of those get their own little, you know, temporary sign? And then because they're not at the entrance, they're set back, you know, perhaps, that they want to have their little temporary sign like, well, you know, turn here for this or, you know. That might be a little hard to, to enforce, like which, you know, which one belongs to which and, you know, yeah, they're not, the, the building is on that whatever, four acres, ten acres, twenty acres, you know, somewhere on that site. And it's all, it could be that it's not, it may not even be public property, it might all be owners' association, you know, property. And they have these, some temporary signs and they each want their one sign, but.
I think in, if I can maybe respond, in drafting this part of the code, because I think this is the part of the code that we as staff struggled with the most to get rid of off-premise signs, like, you know, the garage sale sign, the political sign, the seasonal sign. We're like, okay, okay, we can manage it by physical characteristics, but off-premise made uncomfortable. We talked about it mostly in the context of permanent signs, where we viewed the enforcement to be pretty straightforward and just a requirement that the lease or the deed be included with the building permit application. We didn't talk about it at all relative to temporary signs. So I don't, just off the top of my head, have a great response for you. I think that code enforcement was, was most comfortable with the temporary one sign limit because that is a visual, like visually pretty easy when they decide to prioritize that. But I know, speaking for myself, I hadn't thought about the off-premise same owner in relation to temporary signs yet, so. Unless you guys were thinking that.
No, I, I haven't. And so I'm trying to think, you know, like Applewood Shopping Center, the King Supers is setback, but they want a temporary sign on Youngfield. How is that addressed?
I think you're going in the right direction, but it's, I, I guess my understanding would probably be, it's probably when it's gonna be a real problem, when it's pretty blatant, you know. Like Mr. Doll said, there's not gonna be somebody checking. It's gonna be like, you know, wow, it seems like there's a plethora of, of the same business owner signs, you know, here and there and let's, let's call, you know, let's call them on it and see, you know, does this sign match up? And, and you'd find out, no, they have more than one and.
For what it's worth, a lot of the really big sites do have master sign plans that usually address temporary signage. But that doesn't answer your question directly because not all of them do and they're not required to. But I know a lot of the big developments that are in place or that we're working on will be doing master sign plans or have done master sign plans. Which, if you're unfamiliar, well, you are the, the governing body over those. You, you decide on master sign plans. But essentially sites over a certain number of acres, you know, for kind of these reasons, they, they don't really fit into the sign code can, can kind of propose their own sign code, you know, if you will, for their property. Usually it's a give and take of our sign code, you know, like we don't need these signs, but we want a little bit more. but we want a little bit more of this because of how our property is situated and whatnot. And usually, they always address temporary signs in those. I don't know, maybe that was more of a tangent than helpful information for you, but a lot of those big sites do have those master sign plans.
And I think your observation Scott is a good one. We're trying to regulate the sort of ninety percent of things that we know we can regulate, and then the other, there's always gonna be somebody that's gonna do something that's not allowed, and then it's just a matter of resources and how egregious something is and things like that. But I've marked down, give some thought to sort of ownership of temporary signs and locations for that, cuz we hadn't, I had not thought of that, at least.
Thank you.
What's your next visual we're looking?
For this? No. Are we, are we good with, I already flipped a page, sorry, off-premise signs? Okay. So the next type of signage that council wanted us to look at was business district signage. So we're not looking for direction here, we're just kind of informing you of what we've come up with. So on your screen, you'll see two examples from Denver because apparently they have some sort of business district signage where these two different business districts have, you know, essentially the same sign pointing you from, you know, Thirty Eighth Avenue onto Tenison, and, you know, from, I think this is Spear onto Thirty Second Avenue towards those business districts. Same font, same sort of style, arrow. Clearly, there's some sort of similar element that Denver regulates here. So this is just up here as an example of kind of what we are aiming to achieve with the business district signage, you know, like updating that. So, for the business district signage, it feels appropriate to provide an administrative policy rather than writing it into the code in coordination with planning and public works to establish what constitutes a qualified business district, and then the standards for size, color, location of these signs. Within the sign code, they will fall under our public signage, so they're not regulated that much. So, you know, the city would kind of lead that effort to put up business district signage. And then, you know, we will, we haven't worked on this policy yet. We've been focusing on kind of the meat of the sign code, but once we, you know, start getting the sign code more buttoned up, we'll start working on this policy and present it to council, you know, before we implement it. But this is kind of the vision that we have here, you know, based on council's direction.
I, to be honest, I probably tend to not pay any attention to those signs whatsoever.
Sure.
I don't really have any, I'm probably more neutral on it, if they are to stay or not stay.
Sure. Yeah, council had a few districts that they wanted to make sure they could sign from like Wadsworth or Sheridan or something because they're kind of off, maybe off those main corridors. So that's where that comes into play, I think. They'll wanna see that. So, moving forward, I mentioned this earlier in the presentation. We had to create this new category of sign called yard signs. So this captures kind of some of our content-based sign categories, like political signs, real estate signs, community event signs. All of those were scraped and all kind of fall into this content-neutral category now. So, when we brought this to city council, we recommended one small yard sign per property, and then we kind of floated the idea to council that during certain parts of the year, folks may wanna have more than one sign, say around election time, where, you know, between, say, October fifteenth and November thirtieth, or, you know, whatever those dates would be, you could actually have three. So, the overall intent of that was allowing folks to have more than one election sign. Like in the most recent election, we had the mayor and several council members. So if you wanted to, you know, have your choice for mayor and your choice for council member, there's at least two signs right there. Think about it, on your election or whatever, where you got presidents, senators, you know, everything, you're gonna want more than one sign, you know, if you're politically active. So, that was kind of our presentation to council, was during certain parts of the year, we can allow folks to have more than one sign so they can, you know, be a little bit more expressive. Council talked through that quite a bit and ultimately landed on, they reached a consensus to have no limitation on the number of temporary yard signs on a residential property. So they didn't want to restrict residential properties at all. So you could have a hundred yard signs, you could have one yard sign. We're not looking at it. It just needs to fall within our size standards, but unlimited number. So, our question to you is, do you agree with that?
But they're temporary.
They're temporary, yep. So they'd be signs just like this, so, you know, going back to the material and...
Temporary by character, but not temporary by time. So we wouldn't come by after X period of days and say, that has to come down.
Yeah, there isn't a time limitation, I think.
And I don't know if this was a factor, if I should even put this out there, but we inadvertently timed our discussion with council before the election. So I don't know if that was a factor at all in anybody's opinions.
So what I'm seeing pop up around is people who are buying these kinds of signs, but they're advertising guitar lessons and those kinds of things. And I totally understand the political sign of having more than one, but what would stop me from putting a bunch of signs up that said eggs and, you know, goat rides and whatever it is? And cluttering my whole frontage with those kinds of signs that I really just sort of kept out there all the time, even though they're temporary? I just, I'm starting to see this a lot with like the perpetual yard sale and kind of some things like that. I don't know if it is...
Well, the, well, the yard sales are a permissible item, and so you, it doesn't cost anything, but if you have a yard sale, you're supposed to get a city permit. You know, so as that relates...
The sign. You should have a sign up all year, even if you only have the yard sale three times a year.
Right, so as I've been walking around, I've just seen, you know, different things on each sign, but maybe three or four in a yard. And it clearly isn't changing, you know, or going away, but it's advertising everything from, you know, massage therapy to guitar lessons, or, you know, things that people do.
Yep. So, yeah, under this proposal, under direction from council, that's, that's okay, that's allowed.
But I think it's very fair for you to push back on that and to...
I have trouble with the amount. I have trouble. I completely agree with a short-term election, but I don't with the, I mean, I recognize it's a temporary sign, but those temporary signs are often out there for a long time, if not permanently. And so I have problems with more than... I have problems with more than one, to be honest with you, because I'm only allowed one as a business, you know, as a permanent sign. But maybe I'm being...
Well, we should hear from, let's hear from everyone's...
And to clarify what you're talking about, is we do have a regulation that limits signs for home-based businesses. I think it's probably what you're talking about.
Right, but under this, I could put a bunch of temporary signs out for my home-based business. And that's what I'm communicating is that...
I, I think, yeah, I think the first thing, when you talk about three, three doesn't seem very much. Although I know that the political climate has changed, and years ago, when I first moved here, you know, I'd see maybe, I don't know, three to ten in someone's yard. And like, just this last election, which was non-presidential, it's like hardly anybody had any political signs cuz everything's shifting towards the, you know, the social media online. But, you know, maybe, you know, maybe we come up with a number, and maybe you could base it on, could you base it on acreage or square feet? Or is that just too complicated? Cuz, you know, it's like, what if you have like ten acres and you said, well, you can only have three signs? It's like, really? Three for ten acres? But then you got a residence and they have three, so what is...
Our goal has always been to draft it so that code enforcement can be driving by and sort of snatch up what they need to if they're doing sort of targeted enforcement in a certain neighborhood.
Is saying an election time period, is that content?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Well, no, I mean, that's, it's, you can regulate time, place, and manner, just not content. So you can say, in residential districts, you can have three temporary, you can have one temporary sign all the time. And from October one and November thirty, you can have three temporary signs. We don't care what they say.
I like that.
And we kind of took that to council. We took it to them from a timing standpoint, probably the wrong time. They're the heroes of the campaign. But I tend to agree with Scott that fewer and fewer yard signs, because the emphasis has moved. And at some point, you have a right to, the whole reason we have sign codes is to deal with visual clutter. So you've got the right to do that, and just where should the line be? Ms. Leo?
Yeah, I like the idea of limiting the yard sign story in an election, but I don't like saying from a certain date to a certain date because you have primaries in the spring. It should be more a certain amount of days from the election day in front of and behind or something. Because there's also special elections for some reason.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, and then you have code, it's like, you know, then the code's gotta look at the calendar and go like, okay, let's see, what day is it? How many signs? You know. I think, I'm not sure that I like the time constraint and just pick a number, you know, maybe, like what would I feel comfortable with with my neighbors? I think five, I'd be kind of right on the fence, like, eh, maybe it's a little too much, maybe not, but I'm okay with it. Three, definitely. You know, if they had ten in their yard, it's like, I'd feel like that's too much. But that's, that's me personally, but that's for residential, you know.
Right, but would you be okay with five temporary signs that weren't temporary?
In someone's yard?
Yeah, cuz what this...
That probably, yeah, that'd probably be a little much, all year round.
That's what this allows, and I think it's really opening up the business-in-home sign, like, it's kind of goes back to the getting around, if you have a permanent sign, you're only allowed one sign. But if I have temporary signs...
Yeah. I think what's gonna happen is even if you have that number three, you pick three, and you say, this is what it is. I bet you nine times out of ten, most people will, if they had four, or if they had five, no one's gonna call them in, you know, and they're gonna have more than three. But you have the teeth on it that if somebody did call them on it and said you got more than three, then the code enforcement could come out, but, you know.
Are you saying put a cap on the number, but have it apply year-round?
Yeah, I just think it's tough with, I think, work with the code enforcement, make it easy for them that they can go out there at any time, just go like, yep, the number's three, this is what it is. You know, or if it's four or five, whatever that number is. But, you know, in some of these single-family residential, I think five year-round is probably quite a bit. Three would probably be okay. But does this code, is this specific to residential, or is this also for, you know, commercial?
I believe this is specific to residential.
Residential, it's a yard sign, residential. In business districts, you'll have that whole set of other kinds of signs, and then the amount you can have, so... Clearly, this is kind of written around or intended to be written around the political expression. Make sure that there's room for that. But Commissioner Weaver, you know, points out that you can take that and use it for anything. We're not talking content anymore, as we should not be. And so, do you really want to see five signs on your neighbor's property pretty much year-round?
Well, I can tell you with apartment complexes, because they already have the sign, and when they have vacancies, you're gonna see kind of like the picture that we just saw of, you know, move-in special. And I'm just, I'm really offended by those signs. I just don't, I love them for elections. I just, I think they look pretty shoddy when they are there up year-round. And so I would, I'm not sure how to deal with the election sign cuz I had more than one sign for the election, you know, and, but I, how many? I don't like the, for the...
This is probably a naive question cuz I know special elections could theoretically happen any time, but how many different times of the year is there an election? At the most, so to speak, a couple.
Primaries and...
Primaries and then the general.
But even at a primary, you potentially have a couple different candidates you're voting for, right? So you would still wanna have multiple signs at those periods? I mean, and I don't know if we can, we can't read the sign, but we can, could we still reference an election day as a point in time to regulate time?
Point for the, that's no different than saying November one. You know, election, you know, ninety days before election day. Within the window, ninety days before and thirty days after election day, here's how many, and the rest of the year, here's how many, and that's, that's kind of the bright line. I do think that it would be helpful for you to maybe push back on council a little bit on this one because clearly you feel strongly about it, and I think that's, they deserve to hear, that you think they should think a little bit longer about this no-limit approach. And if the idea is, look, a certain period of time before and after the November one or the election day, you could use November one, it's not gonna vary much by a week, so what? A larger number, and then the rest of the year, a smaller number is what we, the planning commission, think that you should, you should think about for neighborhood integrity and visual clutter. And we think you have an obligation to think more carefully about that. And I think that would be a message that would be, you know, received.
Yeah, I feel pretty strongly about that because I think, you know, it seems like we're really focused on the business districts, but I think we're just, if we don't be mindful of it, we're just gonna push it into the residential stuff. And, you know, We Ridge does, I mean, I know we've created these zone districts and everything else, but as you all know, there's sort of these fluid boundaries between the commercial and the residential, and I, I just... That's, maybe I feel...
Is there consensus around that message?
Well, to kind of get off the dime on this, cuz, you know, at some point, you gotta decide what it is you're gonna recommend. You might try a consensus that doesn't have numbers, but has a concept, which is, before and after the election for a good solid period of time, council, we think the number of temporary signs should be larger, and it should be smaller. There should be limits to begin with. You have no limits, council. There should be limits. We're proposing, I'm making this up, but see if you could agree to it. We're proposing that the council settle on a limit for the number of signs for the election season, and you pick a time, a range of dates, but pick one. And we think that to protect neighborhoods, which is your job, that the rest of the year, there should be a smaller number, and we like one. But, you know, the minute you start talking about a number, then you're gonna say, well, what about two? And you're gonna say, well, about four? And in a way, you might find that it's more helpful to council for you to give them the sort of two-category concept and say, put numbers to it, and here's the category. You figure out the numbers, council. We think you ought to have these categories. How's that?
What he said. I wrote it all down.
Cuz otherwise, you know, you're gonna wrangle around on three and four, and in a way, that's the wrong place to have the battle. The place to have the battle is to have limits that, you know, that council can stand behind. Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, we're getting there. Our current code allows for freestanding signs to be supported either by a monument-style base or by a pole. So the only exception to this is in the mixed-use-zone districts where signs are required, new signs are required to be monument signs, monument style, so the image on your right. In an effort to improve the visual impacts associated with signs and to enhance the character of the community, we asked council to consider whether the regulations for new signs should be augmented to all monument signs. we asked council to consider whether the regulations for new signs should be augmented to all monument signs. Council reached a consensus to require monument signs for all new development. So vacant lot that's building or someone who's, you know, scraping an entire lot and building something new would have to do monument signs. However, they were split three-three on regarding new signs not associated with new development. Mayor Jay broke the tie in support of allowing new signs not associated with new development to continue being either monument or pole. So you're a business owner, you're not redeveloping, you're not tearing anything down, you just want a new sign. The council swayed towards allowing them to have either a pole or a monument sign with the thought that it could be cost prohibitive for someone to improve their property in signage if they were forced to do a monument style base rather than, you know, a small pole type sign. So, it's kind of two questions there, I guess, is for new developments, well, I guess council kind of split it into two. For new developments, are we comfortable requiring, all new developments, no matter where they are, are we comfortable requiring monument signs and no more pole signs for new development? And then, if it's not new development or total redevelopment, are we comfortable with allowing still pole signs and monument signs? Or do we just want across the board, no new pole signs?
Take them up on time, new development. You've been to communities where it's all monument signs. You know, and I notice it when I go to a place where it's all monument signs. It's, it's, it's a, you can tell how I feel about this. It's a really an impressive visual. It's so much more pleasing. All of a sudden, everything's kind of down at eye level. There feels like a lot less clutter, the sky looks clear. It's nice, you know.
Is it that it's a pole or is it just that it's a height restriction?
I think that it's up, you know, for the O'Reilly sign here. You know, if that were down on the ground, as shown on the right, and you're driving past it, how do you feel about that? That's kind of the job we're in. I mean, that's our task here. And, you know, the inclination in the industry is always to put it up and put it up high. And I get that because visibility is the name of the game. And I absolutely get that, but, you know, many communities have said, yeah, that's true. But for us, it's really more about identification of your business. If I know I need to go to O'Reilly Auto Parts and it's more or less along this block and I'm driving along and it's all monument signs, I'll see that sign. I don't, I'm not going to drive by O'Reilly just because it doesn't have a pole sign. You know, new development is obviously easier to make the decision. And that's where council went because you fold that cost into the development itself and it's really not any, it's not a big difference. It's all about appearance. New development, that's the easier choice to make, I think, than the one where clearly it was harder for council, they split on it. And I think they probably appreciate some direction from you on the second part because they're clearly kind of, kind of, you know, of two minds about it. But in respect for Zach, we should probably answer the first question first, but Ms. Leo?
Well, I just wonder how that would affect businesses along the highways where it draws people off the highway to the businesses.
Sure, so we would, so if you're within a quarter mile of the freeway, you are allowed to have a pole sign up to fifty feet in height. We're not going to change that. So they can still have their fifty foot high pole sign. This is more for away from those areas or in those areas where they just want to do a regular sign, I guess.
Good times still has its, can still have its sign out there.
I think the intent has, with pole signs has always been distance along roads and highways. You know, you're getting up high, so you have the high visibility. What doesn't, typically when I work on projects, I'm not seeing any pole signs, it's always monument signs. But again, that's all new development. With the pole signs, you know, if we're trying to create in some areas, say along Thirty-Eighth, more of a urban feel to it, you're going to plant trees. Guess what the tree's going to block? The pole sign. It's going to be, they're going to be in conflict with each other. The monument sign is going to be lower, more pedestrian. I would, I mean, I'm definitely in favor of all new development, like absolutely no pole signs. It's all monument. And then as far as the, as painful it is, I would be in favor of some type of amortization of the pole signs. I don't know what that number would be, you know. Is it going to be two years, you know? What? But I think, I think that would, I think that would change things, going from the pole to the monument. But it does take a real estate. In some of these areas, there's not a lot. There's like, some of these areas along, say Thirty-Eighth, for instance, I don't see hardly any landscaping. It's just asphalt. There is no trees, there is no landscaping, but there's a pole sign. So it's a difference.
Just to clarify, I think you were about to do this, so Thirty-Eighth is, most of Thirty-Eighth from Wad's to shared in its own mixed use. So they're required in mixed use to go to monument signs. A better maybe point of reference is something like Forty-Fourth, where I think you tend to see a lot more existing pole signs. And that's exactly right. So anybody who does come in and want to put a monument sign if they are pinched on space, we end up doing a parking analysis to see if they can take away a parking stall to put the pole sign sort of that, in that area. But if you can visualize something like Forty, they both look the same right now. The rule is on Thirty-Eighth, it's not on something like Forty-Fourth, which could potentially benefit from a little bit more consistency in something. And, you know, signs is sort of the entree into that and may change more quickly than a full building would get redeveloped, right? So where can, you know, we're just sort of at the tip of the iceberg of what we can do to try to start creating some sort of visual consistency, especially on some of those commercial corridors.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Rome. I think we should move all new and, is the word amortize?
Amortize, yeah.
Amortize.
And you can get to an amortization on the existing development that wants to, just to replace the sign. You can get there a couple of ways. You can say, when you replace the sign, it has to be a monument sign. So, you know, you can live with your pole sign for thirty years if, you know, if you want. That's one way to do it. And then over time, people will really need to replace their signs and they'll end up as monument signs. That amortization period, if you will, is much longer. And it's really a compliance period because you're not telling them they have to adjust at a certain date as we were doing for the other matter on the two years, the changeable copy. You're just saying, keep it as long as you like, but when you change, it's got to go down. That's less intrusive, to be blunt, than an amortization period that says, if you've got a nonconforming pole sign on Forty-Fourth Avenue and these other districts, you've got X amount of time to get it done and to change it to a monument sign and spend the money. I did an amortization of nonconforming mobile home parks in this town. I was town attorney for it for a long time. And the town ended up, they debated what the time period ought to be. They ended up making it longer and they did the same thing with nonconforming lighting wall packs. And there was a lot of hue and cry about, gee, that's awfully long, it should be shorter. And I think it was the mayor made a smart remark or wise remark. And he said, you know, once you, the whole battle here is starting the clock. It really isn't how long the clock goes because you'll wake up and two years or five years or whatever we decide on will have ripped on by. Our job is to start the clock and that's much more important than, and if politically we buy some support by giving more time, that's a cheap price to pay to get the system going. And once the system's going, people go, okay, it's twenty seventeen, okay, I've got until whenever. And they start incorporating it into their planning. And by the end of that period, there really was no gnashing of teeth. Everybody knew it was coming and it was just not a big deal. So that was a lesson I learned, that if you're going to do amortization, add a little time and buy support that way. And before you know it, that time will flash on by and you're fine. So your choices around existing development, I think, are go with council's approach, which is, you know, you get to keep your sign when you redevelop, you get to keep your sign. Go with an approach that says, when you redevelop, you got to change it to monument sign. Hang on to it for as long as you like. Or door number three, which is an amortization period for nonconforming pole signs at some period of time. Which door sounds best? One, two, or three?
And maybe with that in mind, I'll jump forward a slide because the next slide is, the next topic is very much related to everything that we just talked about. It may help push things forward. So we're talking about nonconforming signs. So in this example, you know, the right of way is probably right behind the sidewalk. So this sign would be too tall, too close to the right of way, probably too big or pole mounted where monument signs are required. So kind of some of the issues that we just talked about. Our current code would allow you to come in, if you bought this property, keep the pole sign and just change out that white part that says car wash. If you just change that out, you can keep that sign even though it's nonconforming in about five different ways. So what we propose to council is, do you want to allow that practice to continue? Or do we want to start amortizing these signs? They reached a consensus to move forward with creating a schedule for amortization of these nonconforming signs. So, backtracking to what we were just talking about, this, you know, if you agree with council on amortizing, you know, these existing nonconforming signs, that would take care of probably a good, well, maybe not a good portion, but a portion of some of those pole signs that we were just mentioning along Forty-Fourth and Thirty-Eighth.
That are otherwise conforming, they're just, they're just pole sign and they're not conforming because of that.
Right, so on Thirty-Eighth, yeah, they would be nonconforming just because they are a pole sign. On Forty-Fourth, they may be nonconforming because they're too close to the road, too tall, you know, whatever the case may be. So I don't know if that helps the previous discussion. Let me know if you want me to back up and we can talk about that too with this in mind or how you want to, how you want to move forward with this, these topics.
So there's, there's three questions kind of on the table. We'll take the easiest one first. Do you want to require new signs on new development to always be monument?
Objections to that? No objections? Great.
Do you want to require all new signs to be monument signs regardless of whether there's development involved? Currently, you're allowed to come in and take, if this was properly set back, you could take the car wash portion off and put a new cabinet on an existing pole regardless of sort of what, where it is on the property. So all new signs regardless of sort of the other level investment that may be made, pole or monument?
Monument, yeah.
Any objections? No, that seems like consensus. Okay. And then the last thing, I can't, my mind is getting inflexible, but that sort of makes, makes this answer is also-
I think that makes this answer easy.
Yeah.
Because it's nonconforming in a bunch of ways and you really shouldn't be able to like continue that nonconformance. Really, when everyone else is having to put up monument signs as you've just suggested, so.
And then I guess it's just a question of how, as you were saying, we don't need to pick a number of years, but are you feeling generous in terms of we should make the amortization period long enough that it becomes sort of business friendly, investment friendly and sort of appropriate for?
I'd pick three years.
Three years? Throwing a number out there, okay.
I'll throw a number out there. I think, I think, you know, I don't think, you know, the answer of, well, we'll wait until it really is broken down, it needs to fix, you know, it might be twenty, thirty years. I think it needs to happen a lot faster than that and, and, three years, I mean, I think anything other than, you know, thirty years, there's going to be pushback irregardless of, you know, not wanting to take the pole sign down. And so I could say three years, but it's probably going to be more determined by city council.
Yeah, although I think it's fair to put a number out there and let them take a shot at it and move it to one or- So we hear three years. This is an easy one. All it is is a number, so we should hear from everyone. Let's go down the row. Let's just hear some numbers.
Speak up if anybody else has some other numbers in their head.
Start with you. Three years? Two? With? Three? Five? Four? Guess what the average of that is? I think it's three. Is that okay for a recommendation? Trust council to do the right thing? We'll see what that is. Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, yeah.
Yeah, for a nonconforming.
For a nonconforming sign, yeah.
If it met the setback and the height, then it would be fine until you decided to replace it and then it would be a monument.
But because it's nonconforming with respect to setback in height.
So if it's nonconforming, it has to change in three years?
Yeah, yeah.
If it's a conforming pole sign?
Right.
Then it goes to, until the sign needs to be replaced, I can only replace it?
With a monument sign. That's what you've told us. Correct. It means it comes down. Yeah.
Right. So good clarification. And the plastic sheet doesn't require a permit. So you could get a new business, put in your plastic sheet, have good advertising on day one and then know that within three years, you've got to do something about it.
Well, what about the poles, just in general? I mean-
Yeah, so we never talked about amortizing all pole signs. I mean, like if a pole sign got a building permit today, and, because we can issue those based on our current code. We've not ever, we didn't ever ask council and you can certainly weigh in on that of whether all pole signs should be amortized. Some longer period of time.
Yeah, I think they should, but I don't know, I don't know at that timeframe, it should, you know. Because, because here's the thing, is even if they have a pole sign right now, I would imagine that most of the businesses already have additional signage on the building. This is just an addition to.
They're more expensive, but yeah, usually people have as much signage as they can get.
Yeah. So what would that, you know, what would that number be for getting rid of the poles and going forward? Because that's going to be a bigger cost than just the, you know, I think twenty years is too long. I think ten years is going to be too long. I mean, imagine if it took ten years to get all the pole signs down and then to monument signs.
That's not terribly long in the, I mean, you think about some redevelopment schemes that take five, you know, Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth has been in the works for six years or something like that. Doesn't feel like that long.
If the, is there anything we could write that, if it was, if you want to make it more business friendly, I guess, if the, if the ownership changed, as soon as it, make it so that as soon as it changed, so, you know, if it changed from car wash to anything other than what that exactly says, as soon as, if it changed ownership, pole sign's gone.
Yeah, you could. Yes. To some extent, it's what you think you can sell to council. Now we've entered the realm of sort of, sort of political, you know, but, you know, that's part of your job is to figure out how to influence them and how to spend your influence the best. So.
Because then you're not putting the burden on the person that has the sign. But if somebody, you know, so if somebody came in and they wanted, I mean, I guess ownership would probably be the easiest. Because then even if, even if, you know, Amanda hypothetically wanted the exact same name for the car wash and nothing was going to change, she'd just want to keep it as is, status quo. If she, once we change the ownership, then it would have to be monument sign.
When you say, yeah.
Yeah.
From a, from a practical purpose, I just want to clarify, when you say ownership, so we're never notified if one property transaction happened. But a new business has a business license that we would see and then we could quickly check sort of what is the sign landscape?
Yeah.
And let them know, you know, within, I don't know, you know, usually people want to open because they need it. They'll, you play the tape board, okay, that's a thirty thousand dollar investment I didn't anticipate. I'll need to be making some revenue. I don't know. I think, I think it's a, it's a milestone that we are aware of, so that's a good thing. But it's still, it's a, something that still has to be budgeted for, you know, from a business standpoint. We're doing a landscape enforcement program over the summer and most people said, I can't replace my landscaping, I didn't budget for it this year. So I'm just trying to think of sort of the devil's advocate side of what a business would say when we have to make that phone call of like, great, we're so happy to have you in Wheat Ridge and you need to tear down your sign. You know what I mean? Think there's somewhere in there we can find a balance.
This is for you. Is the right, is the requirement of disclosure required if they know that the sign is not- Is the right, is the requirement of disclosure required if they know that the sign is not in compliance?
If the present owner knows that?
Right, if they were going to sell it, do they have to disclose that that sign?
Interesting. Let me kind of, yeah, if the property owner knows, that's a, yeah, actually, there's usually some kind of, is it in compliance with law? Kind of thing, and increasingly you see in closing statements disclosures, you know, that you certainly see them residential. Assuming you see them in commercial as well. Uh, so it will be largely governed by what the con, the real estate contract says and how many dis, whether and what degree it, I don't think there's a legal requirement, but whether it's kind of built into the contract, increasingly they are. But, you know, sometimes you have the, hey, I'm selling it as is where is, I'm making no warranties about this, and that's reflected in the price. So do all the investigations you want, but I'm just, as the seller, I'm saying that's, I'm not making any warranties and, you know, good luck. And you can have those too, and so somebody buys it and then they, they get the news. You know, I do think it'd be a tough sell to council to, to, given where they're at on, on this, you know, already. Uh, it's going to be a tough sell to, to establish a really fast amortization program for otherwise conforming signs. I just think that's going to be hard, but that's, it's up to you to make recommendations, probably time to make a recommendation. We heard from everybody, what are we going to do, Mr. Chairman?
Can I make one comment? Are we now saying then that pole signs are not, non, going to be non-conforming? Is that what we're, and so there's going to be a three-year period?
Not, not, not three-year for the poles.
Otherwise conforming poles.
Yeah. For, so for a conforming pole sign right now, we're saying yes for a pole sign, but not three years, that, we haven't determined how many years. Um, we've talked about ownership, if the ownership changed, but, um, you know, we could put a, we could put a time on it, we could say ten years, you know, to get it started, get the conversation started.
And just for clarity, Emery, the, the three years was for non-conforming pole signs, yeah.
So for a conforming pole sign, you really need to be giving them more time than that, this is not a, you know, they're, they're in conformance, and you've, you've rewritten the rules to make them out of conformance. And fine, you know, but, but how much time or on what schedule? I agree with Lauren that, that if you just say it's the minute the business changes, I can guarantee what you're going to hear in front of council, which is, I was thinking of moving my business to your city, and then I learned that you, you, I guarantee you that story, and that story will be compelling in this room. And, and probably that story will get told before, or when this draft comes to council, I, I think that's probably a non-starter for them. So I think you're better off recommending a term of years that's kind of, that's more generous. And I think it might, even that might be a tough sell, and I'm not trying to represent the council's views at all, I'm just thinking out loud about what you can, you know, what's realistic here. So you're about to get them to tell you what to recommend us?
Yeah, what do you guys think about?
Well, so are we still protecting, uh, conforming pole signs within a quarter-mile buffer of the highway? But non-conforming signs within that quarter-mile now would need to be amortized?
So, I mean, I guess that's kind of, if you want to make a recommendation on that, um, from our point of view, we don't want to touch the, the signs within a quarter-mile of the highway, or at least their allowance up to fifty feet. I guess if there's a, a pole sign within a quarter-mile of the freeway, say on Kipling, that is not taking advantage of the fifty feet, would that fall under the?
Yeah, they're two pretty clearly different buckets for us, it's fifteen feet or fifty feet in terms of height, so, we're really just talking about the ones that are supposed to be fifteen feet or less, there's probably a non-conforming one that's a little taller, that would be in that three-year bucket. But now the question is, if you're fifteen feet or less, and you meet your setback, and you're a pole sign, how, do you want to get rid of all of those? And if so, do you want to say, we acknowledge it needs to be longer than three years, or you want to throw a number out there like ten, or whatever it would be? Does that answer your question?
I think we should throw out some numbers.
It's a tou, this is a tough thing, because you've got, like on Kipling, you've got Village Inn, and they have a pole sign, big sign, that sticks way up, and they're, that's a hundred feet probably, or two hundred feet from the highway. So now, is that going to be a conforming or a non-conforming if that franchisee sells that to another franchisee? I mean, I'm just, that's...
That's within a quarter-mile of the highway, so that would be okay.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, that's right.
Well, we should narrow this down so that you can spend the next two hours, you've been here for two, on the bylaws. We don't want to short-change them.
Let's start with the easy question, is there consensus to suggest to council that they amortize all pole signs, conforming or not?
Okay.
Obviously, yes. Is there an interest in amortizing all pole signs? Meaning at some point in time in Wheat Ridge, there are no more pole signs?
Except for the ones out on the highway.
I think that would be an idea, yeah, that would be an idea. Then you would have, at a certain date, you're not going to wait thirty years for somebody to take the sign down. You're going to have some uniformity.
So then maybe do the same exercises before, and you don't have to have a number this time, but if we went down the line and said, what year would that be? Five, ten, thirty? When you've amortized all pole signs?
Let's start with Commissioner Weaver. What number?
If anything. This is new for council, so if we don't throw a number, we don't throw?
Well, I think ten years. Ten years would be enough time, and if the guy doesn't want to put up a new sign in ten years, he'll sell his business. And that guy will have to put up a new sign. Yeah.
Hang on, it's going twice?
Ten? All righty, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question on the monument signs. Let us say that you're right over here on Wadsworth, and there's a shopette. And there's six businesses in there. And they have a pole sign now. Sort of a shopette sign that lists everybody. And they go to a monument sign to do the same thing, is there, in the code, a size definition for that monument sign? Uh, so that all, all of these five merchants can get their advertising on there? This O'Reilly sign is rather large, so.
Yeah, it is. So, yes.
And if that O'Reilly store was in that shopping center and was taking the pole sign down and going for the shopette's monument sign, do we have some kind of?
Yes, our, our sign allowance is based on the square footage of the building. So the larger building you have, the larger sign you have. A multiple tenant building is allowed a little bit larger signage, and then they can distribute, you know, the owner of that shopette can distribute that signage however they'd like, so they could do it all equally, they could give half of it to a major tenant and then split them up from there. Um, but it, it is based on, on the floor area of the building.
So I think you've just got one last question, right?
There's a height limit of fifteen feet. Yep.
Are you down to the last question?
Yep, we're down to the last question, so we're back on changeable copy. Um, so just as a reminder, like this sign here, where the worship ten a.m. changes every now eight seconds, if that flies with everyone. Changeable copy signs, or LED, changeable copy LED signs are not permitted in the M U N Zone District, which is that, that kind of purplish color along Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and then scattered throughout the rest of the city in various places. Or the M U C T O D Zone District, which is our transit-oriented development district, um, which is only up near the Ward Road Station, um, in the northwest corner of the city. So staff has noted an increased interest in changeable copy LED signage primarily along Thirty-Eighth Avenue, um, where most of those properties are zoned M U N, and they're not allowed. So the, the intent of the restriction was to encourage sign designs that are more pedestrian-oriented in nature. So like the M U N Zone District in general promotes. Despite the current status of the corridor being a non-conforming status, um, or non-conforming pattern, you know, with the building setback really far, that's, that's non-conforming with the M U N Zone District. Um, so council was asked to reaffirm that this restriction is still appropriate based on the purpose and vision of those zone districts. Uh, they were split again, three-three, with Mayor Jay breaking the tie in support of keeping the existing code language, which prohibits changeable copy LED signs in the M U N and M U C T O D Zone Districts. So now we ask the question of you, um, do you think continuing our current prohibition is acceptable? You know, kind of given the, the vision for these corridors, which, again, the M U N is mostly Thirty-Eighth Avenue with a few pockets along Forty-Fourth, and then the M U C T O D is around our soon-to-open, hopefully, train station.
Did everybody understand that?
Sorry?
So, so no, no changeable, the current code is no changeable LEDs in the, in the M U N?
Correct.
Yeah. Um, I would agree with it.
Okay, general consensus, yep.
Good, good chance to tip the balance since they're kind of evenly tied at the council. This, you know, it's good to have a recommendation on this.
Now, the school, there was one comment about governments and stuff like that, but the school is not zoned M U N, correct?
School is zoned M U N.
Oh, the school is zoned M U N?
Yep, and that's where the question's coming into play, is the, this, the school, I mean, to be quite honest, the school wants one of those changeable copy signs because, you know, they're coming down, and they're saying every other school in Jeffco basically has one, and they just, we, we can't allow them per current zoning code to have one of those signs on their, on their property. We're talking about the school specifically on Thirty-Eighth and Upom, and then, you know, any other school along Thirty-Eighth Avenue is in the same boat, essentially. So, you know, we floated this idea with, with Mr. Dahl about, you know, is there some sort of carve-out that we can make for them that, that isn't, isn't, um, content-based, that would allow the school to have the same sign that every other school in the district seems to have, at least as they're telling us? And, you know, he floated a, maybe a carve-out for, you know, properties owned by the government or a school district or, um, political subdivision of the state. So we would really like your opinion on that, that came up after the council hearing, so council hasn't heard that. We kind of heard about it in between, uh, those, or the school specifically, we heard about that in between that hearing and this hearing, um, or study session. So we'd like your input on if you think that's appropriate, or just, it's M U N, it's M U N, and it's just not allowed like we just said.
So carve-out to the prohibition or not for schools and public entities?
Yeah, I see, I see you could, you could rezone it, why, I don't know why it was rezoned to M U N anyway, but, having gone past that, you know, if for some reason we were going to say have a library that was going to be on Thirty-Eighth and, and M U N, that would be pretty cool, and I think most of us, I, I can, can't speak for everybody, but I wouldn't have a problem if a library had changeable copy.
So any objections to basically a public institution, you know, public?
Right.
State or political sub, objections to the carve-out?
I don't have objection to that.
Not seeing any objections, great, you're done.
Okay, great. That's it for sign code, thanks for your, oh, next, sorry, let's go over next steps really quick. Um, so we're doing a study session now in November, we'll bring this back to council in December, maybe. The schedule gets a little dicey with all the holidays, but we'll, we'll try to do that. Um, and then we're, we're aiming towards public hearings in January, February, March timeframe um, to get this approved and codified.
Are there any questions about sign code that we didn't get to? Do you want to take a quick break before we jump into bylaws?
Yeah, okay, let's go for it.
Five minutes. Mr. Chair, we need five minutes, did you hear that?
Let's take a five-minute break.
You know, things like like that. How do we resolve ties or whatever? And the the one thing that was kind of added is what happens if you get to eleven P M? Won't happen tonight. Council has that rule, you know, eleven P M, they have to take a motion to keep going. It has to pass by a supermajority. There was a time, I think in the late nineties, I was the city attorney when, we took that motion almost every single council meeting night. And thankfully, since about two thousand two, we haven't had to do that. That added a little language, but on balance, I think I'd be, as we go through, thinking about, do we really need this? Does this just make sense? We're always gonna do this. We don't need to be told to do this. Or is this a rule that we never will use? And get rid of it so you have some stuff that's a little leaner and meaner. That's my thought.
Process-wise, sorry, the bylaws, your current bylaws dictate sort of the revision process, which is to have a discussion, which is the purpose of tonight. And then assuming there's some consensus on the red lines or any modifications to those, then we can bring them back to you at our next regular meeting for formal adoption.
I have a couple of questions. It's interesting because I just attended another municipality. I was sitting on the other side and the meeting went to about eleven o'clock and the chair made a motion for continuance. And so we have to go to another planning commission meeting for that project. The one question I did have is, so I saw that and I'm like, oh, that's that's good that, you know, we'll we'll do a continuance if it hits eleven o'clock. But the question I have is, so it says, no regular meeting shall extend beyond eleven P M. And then we skip down and it says, no public hearing shall be started after eleven P M. Why?
Why that?
Well, why the difference? Like, as far as the regular versus public, why wouldn't both of them say a regular meeting or a public hearing shall not extend upon eleven P M?
Here's the difference. Well, that is written to account for the fact you started your regular meeting at seven o'clock. And there've been people here waiting for their hearing, which is the third item on the agenda, and you burned up all your time on items one and two. Now it's eleven, you've decided to keep going. But it's eleven oh five and those poor folks have to start their hearing at eleven oh five. The difference between a meeting and a hearing. A hearing takes place within a meeting. That's that's to prevent people from, you know, being punished by you for, you know, waiting and, you know, you to to start their their story. Because it's the public and we really prize the the rights of the public here. We always have public hearings in city council before other agenda items, you'll notice. They're the first thing, so if people are here to testify, they get to testify and go home and not stay around. And that's what that is designed to protect against.
So you could vote to finish your act of public hearing and still talk about bylaws and sign code if you wanted to, but everybody else in the audience would know they could go home and come back to another meeting?
So if you're in the middle of a public hearing, like my experience with this other
At eleven, keep going.
I was in the middle of a public hearing. It was eleven o'clock and the chair called for continuance.
Here, here, the only rule is that you can't start one after eleven.
Right.
If you've already begun, then you will have a choice at eleven, which is to keep going.
Okay.
Or not. And you, you know, that choice is yours. But, you know, you look out in the room and you see there's forty more people and you go, I don't think we can do this, and you continue it. And look out in the room and there's two more people and you think maybe you can hustle and get it done. You know, you have to evaluate it.
Okay.
I do think, as you pointed out, that it says the no regular meeting shall extend beyond, probably makes sense to say no meeting. Because you might call a special meeting for something. You know, or and and it's unlikely, who's getting who, that a special meeting's gonna go to eleven because it's probably only for one topic. And by gosh, if if you're spending four hours on one topic in a special meeting, there's something dreadfully wrong, but there's no harm in taking out the word regular to make that rule general, if that works.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
How am I, go ahead.
Lauren, I just have one question. The forty-eight hour notice, red notice, does it still?
It does.
And on that forty-eight hour notice, there was one special instance. Was it this year or last year? We had that incredible sleet, well, no, it was like a the ice storm. And I'm not sure that it was forty-eight hours. It was probably less than that, but it was it was in the best interest of public safety to not. I think, I think that was canceled. I know Ken called me up and said, what do you, what do you think about this? And I said it was best interest of safe, life safety to not have that public hearing because it was, it was so it didn't meet your forty-eight hour criteria, but it was kind of an extenuating circumstance.
And, you know, the the court's always recognized that. You have your rules, but then these are acts of God and that allows you to ignore, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not a problem.
Okay. Um, I did notice on the next page, it's on towards, there's a paragraph and it says see on that next page.
Audio tape?
Yeah, so it so it looks like you you crossed out, and this is really, so you've crossed out tape because that's antiquated, but then as we go down, it says, it says, was a participant in exactly the session may examine such tapes.
Such recording, is it?
Yeah, just make the terminology the the same.
Okay.
And then, and then on, go down to where, like twenty-three is crossed out, so a couple more pages. We see twenty-three is crossed out. That's like maybe two more pages.
Dissensus protest is crossed out.
Yeah, so go below that, and I think you mean to cross out four. It says two-two-four. It's underlined two, which it should be twenty-two, but four, but the four is not crossed out. I don't know that that makes a difference or not.
Number two hundred and twenty-four, half I lost that long.
Fair enough. We're like almost to the end for going forward.
And then I saw a couple more pages. We get down to miscellaneous.
Oh, we should number these pages, huh?
Okay, we're there.
So go down to the bottom where it says, public hearings. And it it says, it says to attest by sworn oath. I have yet to to do a sworn oath. Or make that reference.
Judicial matters, you know, it
Is that something that I should be doing?
I I would recommend you do, you you know, over the years, I've come to believe that for a quasi judicial matter, it's, it's not gonna invalidate, you know, the commission's action. But what I've, I've really over time seen is that it it does have a little effect on making people take what they're gonna say a little more seriously. And I think that's not not bad, and it also lends just a little bit more formality to the proceedings. And we we have such a tendency in this country to allow what should be kind of formal work to devolve into side stories that are funny and just pokes at people and that is really kind of offensive. When you think about it, you're doing the people's work. This is someone who's come to you with a rezoning application. And and you're ruling on that and we're making jokes and we're acting like we're at a cocktail party in or at someone's kitchen and just yakking. It's really wrong to do that, and I think, I don't know that a an oath fixes all that. It's the job of the chair to keep, to to project a certain amount of solemnity to the proceedings because it's important that, as you can tell, I really am a I feel strongly about this. I've sat in so many public meetings where the process and the participants are sort of disrespected. And and so I think, you know, it would help.
And what, I was gonna say, what that can often look like in reality, because do you think council does that? I've had to
Yeah, they do. Yeah, the mayor does that.
Typically do, and we could just add in for anybody who's the chair, before any public hearing starts, anybody who thinks they would speak would stand, including staff, raise a right hand and then whoever's chair says something like, do you swear to hold, tell the
The truth as you, as you understand it or as you know it. And that works for people.
Sort of responds, you know, often quietly, but like, yes, or I do, and that's it, and they sit down.
Mayor does a good job. She'll say, okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing and anyone that wants to usually make it on the record. I'm gonna open the public hearing on the X Y Z case. Anyone that intends to testify or speak, please stand, raise your right hand, I'm gonna swear yet, and they all stand up and you say, do and then the mayor says, do you swear to tell the truth in this matter as you know it? If so, please say I do. They all say I do. It's done in thirty-eight seconds. It takes no time.
Could you shoot me over a little excerpt?
You can do that. You remember it already. You're a smart guy. You've got it. It's no problem.
Okay.
But it's not, let me tell you this, it's not the end of the world to not do it. I know it's not been the practice. But it is the practice at the council level. And I I think that it, for the reasons I described earlier, I think that it's it's worth doing. And it costs you nothing, you know, and I think it's it's it shows a little respect for the people that are in front of you, and I think that's always good.
And then the last, the last question I have is on way towards the back under where it says G, so it's above the re-adopted. One of the last kind of one where it's redlined, where it says G, and it says, upon closing the public hearing. It doesn't say anything about a public hearing can be reopened. I've reopened some public hearing. I don't know if we need to add anything in that or not.
Oh, you mean like you've closed it and then somebody raises their hand and says they do actually want to speak after all, kind of a thing?
Yeah, or or sometimes say, in instances, if you need to do a continuance and you're gonna have, you have a public hearing and then you have a continuance and then maybe you need to reopen the public hearing. I I don't know if that's, if we need to add any of that language in there or just keep it as is, but
I'd keep it as is, and here's how come. What the rest of the sentence is really telegraphing is after you close the hearing, then you take action. In the circumstance where you reopen or continue, you're not gonna be taking action. You just aren't.
Okay.
If you're taking action and you've taken action, you better not be reopening the hearing after you've taken action. Cherry Hills Village tried that once. The applicant came and showed up and and said all this stuff and the the commission said, that's fine, we're we're not gonna act on this tonight and excuse the applicant. He goes home. And they reopen the hearing and deny his case. He's not there, and that's bad, and you don't want to do that, and so he got that reversed. But the point is that that if you're into the action mode, you have finally closed it. It might again reopen and continue a bunch of times, but I think you're cool.
That's all the questions I have. Does anybody, any other commissioners have any questions?
Quick question. Nineteen B, in the event a motion fails to receive a majority vote, it shall conclusively be presumed that no action has been taken and it shall be required that a second motion be made, seconded and adopted by majority vote, indicating the definite action, either granting or refusing requested action. So I just don't remember this and maybe we haven't met in a while and I forget, but I never remember an instance where we practiced this. Is that pretty commonplace?
We we did once. What happened is we, somebody made a motion, I think, to approve and it got denied. Or it could have been the other way around. Yeah, failed, the motion failed and that was it, and and then we
Then you redirected someone to make the opposite.
Yeah, we have to, we have to have a positive. Mr. Dahl.
Yeah, no, he's absolutely right, you know, I've been, I think I was in the room then, or I've been in the room a number of times when that's happened. And I'm usually on it enough to say, if it was an approval motion and it and it failed, that doesn't mean it's you didn't move to deny it, you failed to approve it. And and it leaves the applicant kind of a little bit in limbo, and it also leaves, I think, the council in limbo if yours is a recommendation. And so I usually, if I'm in the room, I quickly say, madam chair, mister chair, in order so we have definite action, can we, can we hear a motion from the prevailing side to, you know, to to deny? And somebody says so moved, and then you're you're set. The board of adjustment, for a long time, I think they still have the rule that it's in their rules that look if a if an approval motion fails, it's deemed to be a denial, and then you write up a resolution. I've always thought there's a little goofy bit, okay, and a lot of boards of adjustment operate under that set of rules, and I I probably won't try to unwind that with them because they're and that works because at least then you have a roadmap for what a approval motion which fails means. Here, you don't have that.
Yeah, for them, it's because it's a supermajority, so you can have a majority of people feel one way, but they would never get anywhere if they inverted it. For you, you're not in that boat, so if you, if something fails by a simple majority, you can still invert it and have something conclusive. And it helps us when we go, you know, usually you're And it helps us when we go, you know, usually you're giving a motion with reasons. That helps when we go to council. If we had to go to council, to say, here are the reasons that X, Y, and Z got decided versus this failed, we don't really know why, right? It's not often, but it, it helps me as a staff person when you're in the heat of a long hearing and you can't remember what you're supposed to do after a weird voting situation, to have it sort of written down.
I appreciate you raising that, though, because that, that was something that was very important to me that was in here, because I've experienced that, and it, it, it didn't serve anyone well. You know, the applicant who was sort of denied, you know, the, the public that was there trying to get it denied, I think, and it was, well, it wasn't really denied. And then, as Lauren says, it, it came up to the council, and they went, well, what did Planning Commission do? Well, we don't know. They took a motion that failed, and they took no other positive action. You know, so, so this rule really, you know, serves everyone, I think.
And I think I do remember that case kind of, for some reason, kind of came back around to us.
Yeah.
And then, prior suggestion, we got to make a motion to deny, and then give the reasons.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I have a suggestion, and I have a correction on the clean version.
Okay.
A suggestion that there's page numbers.
Yes.
And the correction is on one, two.
The red line?
Page four. There's two Cs there. It should be C, D, and A.
We spent a lot of time with the red lines and not so much with the clean.
I do think that the revisions are great, because it took out a lot of unnecessary language, so.
Thank you.
Did you see it?
You want to talk about process, the draft here, and then?
If there's no other comments, then we will incorporate what you've given us today and then bring it back for approval at the next regular meeting, which, Tammy, do you remember what the next, is it December 7th?
December 7th.
And we have one other really quick item, just to give you a preview of something that's also coming down the pike on December 2nd, I think.
Because I won't be here for your next meeting, there's an amendment to Chapter 26 that will be in front of you, because as you know, you review and recommend to the council on changes to Chapter 26. And it has to do with cellular facilities. You might recall that within the last, I don't know, six months or so, we redid the CMRS telecom cellular facilities regulations. And good job covered the waterfront there and brought it pretty much up to date. That industry keeps changing. I guarantee you will have to keep doing this, because just like signs, you know, the industry changes, and you got to change, you know, how you react to that. There, part of that regulation had to do with small cells, these kind of smaller facilities that aren't big towers like we have right out here at the, outside the building. And increasingly, those, those facilities serve as kind of extension cords and, I'm no, no expert, but technically, but they, they enhance the connectivity for, for the system, and, and they're increasingly used in association with the larger towers, especially as more demand for, for, for capacity is, is laid on us. Ten years ago, or 15, we all made telephone calls on our phones, and that was it, and that's a certain amount of data. Now, we want to watch full-length movies with audio on that phone. A whole lot more capacity in the system is needed for that, because it's not, it's not the same. There's a whole lot more capacity, and so you need more of these things. And the cellular industry has gone to the state legislature, gotten a bill passed that said, look, for these small cells, we have the right to put them in public rights of way, without the government getting rent for it. You've got to allow them in the public right of way. Good job on behalf of the industry lobbying the state legislature, who basically said, okay, we'll let private companies, we'll mandate local governments have to put, allow private companies to be on public property. You can, you can have various feelings around that, but that was the outcome. Fine. So, we wrote into that, those regulations. Small cells get to be on public rights away, but here are the rules of the game for that, and we put in as many rules of the game as, you know, we could, and I think they work. We defined what small cells were, and we used the state statutory definition. Turns out, the state statute had a mistake in it, and they're going to have to correct it next session in the legislature. But that mistake means that the definition of small cells included inadvertently big towers. Well, they aren't allowed in the public right of way for free and probably never. So, that's now in our code, because everybody just used the state definition. So, what I have done is I have done a little amendment to the definition of small cell that is in Chapter 26 and is in that ordinance that you all saw six months ago or so. And all that amendment does is strike out three lines that would otherwise expand the definition of small cell to be the world. And that's all it is. So, when it comes in front of you, now you've heard my staff report, and I won't be there for that, but, but you can say, yeah, Doll told us about that. This is fine. That's what I recommend. Thank you for letting me save a trip. I was going to be here anyhow, so.
Nobody was fast enough to install those in their public right of way?
Pardon? Nobody's fast enough, yeah. We'd find a way somehow to like not get around to processing that. I've done this Band-Aid in the other cities I represent, and so I wrote up for, for Wheat Ridge as well, and it, it's, it's going to be fine. But the industry, the small cell industry is out there starting to approach cities with applications. We were all kind of worried there'd be a flood of them. There weren't, but the, the calls are now coming in, and they're starting to say, you know, we got the rights under the statute. So, where are you going to let us put our thing in your Wadsworth right of way or on 32nd? And I'm glad that we have good design rules that you approved in place for, for that. But you're right, they, nobody's been brave enough yet to say they want to put a big honkin' tower in the middle of, you know, I don't know, Tabor Street, but this will prevent them from doing that.
Is there anything else?
December 7th is a definite, and I appreciate everybody had sort of responded to our inquiry for the remainder of December. December 21st is still a maybe, so we will obviously let you know as soon as we can of whether or not we think we'll need that meeting. That's all I have.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that.
Call for a vote.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.